Can I start our meeting now? Welcome, everyone, to the Monday, August 6th, regular Town Council meeting, town of Cave Creek, Arizona. Let's see here, flip a page. Mr. Mueller, will you lead us in the Pledge of Legions, please?
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have any public announcements. Call of the public, we have any, that don't have to do with agenda items. Okay.
Adam Trank, please state your name and address for the record.
Adam Trank, 6914 Highland Road, Cave Creek, Arizona. Mayor, members of the council, my fellow citizens and residents of Cave Creek, thank you for all being here tonight, being concerned about the governance of our community. I'm here to address the mayor and council about what Mayor Ernie Bunch once described as our role, leading the town, when I served beside him on that dais, which is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of this community. And I can't really think of any other better way to describe it so succinctly, but watching from afar, because I've deliberately been uninvolved the last couple of years, the last few months, I've seen some things happen that are giving me pause, and obviously, there's an impetus behind my being here tonight. Couple of things, and I've spoken to some of you about it in private, but it's important that I get it out there. To start with first, thank you very much for repaving Schoolhouse Road. Badly needed, there's other roads that really needed being paved, and I'm glad that the town was finally able to find the resources to get that done. But in so doing, and I'm not a road engineer, so I'll probably butcher the verbiage, but the road is super slick, and I know that like with sandpaper, there's different grits, and some of it might have a tackier traction. Anyway, short version is dangerous for horses, and there's places where your trails cross. I've seen two horses go down on the blacktop before it was repaved, let's get that addressed. Second, when we talk about welfare, that's a pretty wide net. You guys are making decisions as they relate to interpreting zoning codes that are affecting the welfare of this entire community. You've got some things on the agenda here tonight that are just an example of that, but our zoning ordinances were written by the founders of this community to preserve a rural lifestyle that I believe has attracted almost everybody that's in this room. Nobody moved to Cave Creek because they wanted to be living in Phoenix or Scottsdale, they certainly had that option, and probably could have done so for less money. But we're making decisions that are going to change the character of this community. We're doing it sometimes based on legal advice, and I understand that you guys are tasked with balancing what you think you are obligated to do legally, and what you should do in order to support the needs of your constituents and the people who you're here to serve. But I'm here to tell you that I've sat on both sides of the dais in different situations, and it is my opinion, it's the role of the town attorney, not to tell you what you need to do, but to find out from you what you want to do in order to serve your citizens, and tell you how to legally accomplish that objective. And in the example of Silverman's, which is on the agenda here tonight, and other issues which have occurred, the closure of the roads for big events and whatnot, I think you guys are making some bad calls. I think that the door is still open to correct some of those problems that have been created, and so that they don't, you know, open the floodgates to more bigger issues. But you have to find the salt within yourselves to stand up to what could be an uncomfortable reality in defending the town in a lawsuit if that even were to happen, and I'm here to tell you, by the way, I don't think it will, people who are, have speculative interests in this community aren't likely to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars litigating a losing proposition, but you need to stand up for this town. Need to stand up for the low-density rural zoning that creates this place and makes it special for everybody. And I say that under the umbrella of health, safety, and welfare. I mean, we don't know what kind of traffic is going to come and go from places like that, we don't know the type of people that that's going to bring in, how that's going to tax our resources in terms of law enforcement and fire and safety, and so we need to think about those things a little bit deeper. The last thing that I want to address, while I have the opportunity to speak to my fellow residents, friends, and neighbors, the general plan. I've taken a close look at it, I'd had no involvement in its drafting, I think that the 2005 general plan is a really good document, and I would encourage anybody before they vote to take a really close look at this one, because the growth pressures of Phoenix and Scottsdale will chew this town up and leave nothing but suburban waste in its place. And we are the last bastion of, you know, the Wild West frontier, we sort of, it's tongue in cheek, but it's why we live here, we've got open space, we've got beautiful vistas, our neighbors have horses, we can go out and go hiking. And if we're going to be doing, you know, plat plan, multifamily home developments and things like that, and high-density development, it's not going to be long before the character of this community is totally eroded. So take a look at the general plan before you vote on it, because I think that the checks and balances really, in my opinion, they're a little weak in that new document. So, anyway, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening.
Good evening, for the record, Jim Pierce, 61st Street, Carefree Sentinel Rock subdivision. First, best wishes, good luck to everyone running for election here in the room. I'm here to talk about the 4,000 acres on the western side of Cave Creek. And to address that issue, I'd like to read a letter to the editor of the Snore News, which so far at least hasn't been published, and it'll be clear why I'm using this forum to talk about this. Here's the letter. On July 24th, I visited a town hall event, quote, "open to Cave Creek residents," unquote, according to seat cards, apparently organized by candidate rights supporters. I expected a debate among council candidates. I brought along a question that I tried to have included, but the moderator told me that the forum format was strictly pre-arranged questions and answers. My proposed question could not be included, so I left. Anyway, this is continuing part of the letter to the editor. Anyway, what follows is my question. Maybe a candidate will reply by way of letter to Snore News. Question for anyone who would like to comment. In 2008, approximately 4,000 acres of state-owned trust land was made part of the town of Cave Creek by expanding the town limits on the western border. Since then, there's been no change in the status of the property. Does anyone have any proposal about how to proceed, such as A, following the spur-crossed example and issuing a bond with an associated property tax, seeking the state land department to auction a parcel to the highest bidder, and trying to buy the 4,000 acres? B, requesting that the state land department change the property status back to its original situation as part of Maricopa County outside Cave Creek? C, finding a generous organization or government to buy the property at a state land auction for the purpose of establishing a land conservation area or public park? Or D, this is a serious possibility, persuading the state land department to offer a grazing lease to someone actively engaged in livestock business so that goats, sheep, or cattle can roam within the town limits? That's the end of the letter to the editor. A few additional personal comments. The 4,030 acres of state trust land is barely mentioned on page 33 of the proposed general plan. Shouldn't the general plan offer some goal and timetable about the property? This issue has been kicked down the road by Cave Creek town councils for 10 years. Do you really want to wait another 10 years until a developer owns the land and begins building thousands of houses? Thank you very much.
Katja Kinsel, 41200 North Echo Canyon Drive, citizen. Thank you, mayor and council. I'd like to read something from minutes of December 18, 2017. Eileen Wright brought an agenda item forward for, to be put on the 2018 agenda at some time, a comprehensive plan for a permanent interconnect between Cave Creek and other municipalities to enable mutual aid to be provided to either system in the event of a water shortage. Mr. Mayor responded that the efforts are already being made through staff at this time, and he is not sure it is necessary for council to bring them up. December 4th, the Cave Creek water policy was passed by council. And my question is, is staff really working on this? I, along with other citizens, would like to know who is working on it, and how long before we see anything? The fact that an emergency issue was picked out of the water policy is extremely important to this town, and I think we all know that, in light of the carefree issues going on. So in this water policy, it says, "The newly adopted policy requires quarterly reporting by staff," and that was 12/4 of 17, "and presentation to the council." I don't think that has happened. Staff was also directed to prepare a report outlining best management practices to present to council within 60 days. That has not happened. That would be March 4th, 2018, by the way. Why is nothing happening with water policies except a few things being interjected into code and ordinances? That is just beyond reproach in my mind. Secondly, I did not realize Mr. Tom Davenport, who stood up and screamed in the forum and swore was a planning commission member. That's wrong. That behavior is wrong, he owes you all and the other candidates an apology. Thank you.
That's all? All right. Council requests for future agenda items. Nobody's got anything? Town manager report?
Mayor, members of council, the rodeo grounds, just for the public's knowledge, because we have some reservations this fall, for the use of the rodeo grounds sustained some significant damage from high winds from a recent storm. It's covered by insurance, the adjuster's been out, it's going to be more than $12,000 repair, and the work of the repairs will be completed before the fall, when these reservations for the use take place. The sign ordinance is scheduled for a hearing before the planning commission on Thursday, August 16th, and election, early voting will be here in this council chamber the week prior to Election Day. Election Day is Tuesday, August 28th, so there will be early voting August 20, 21, 22, 23, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And Election Day, we're open from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We'll also have a box where those that receive their ballot by mail, if it's late, or you don't want to mail it back, you can drop that in the box during the week prior to election, and all day on Election Day.
That it? All right. All right. Consent agenda. Approval of the following minutes. Approval of June 4th, 2018, regular town council meeting minutes. Approval of June 11th, 2018, special town council work session minutes. Approval of the June 18th, 2018, special town council work session minutes, and approval of the June 18th, 2018, regular town council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve? Do we really want to do that based on the stuff that the vice mayor found? You want to pull any of them?
Well, what is it, 300 pages, 200?
300 pages, yeah.
Did you have things specific that you wanted to?
I don't think anything that I came up with was that germane to the overall scope or meaning of the purpose of it.
All right. We had a motion, or a second, anybody a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes clearly have it. All right. Agenda item number one, council discussion and possible direction to staff regarding Silverman's Estates use permit, case number SU18-01. Town attorney?
Mayor, members of council, I've asked this to be on the agenda because a number of issues have arisen since this council's action on July 16th. I may remind you that at that meeting, you all decided to approve the use permit with a number of conditions. There was much discussion during the meeting about possibly having other conditions. Since that meeting, there has been a debate as to the proper procedural process for readdressing, if you can, those conditions. There has been analysis regarding your power to reconsider an action, and I agree that, under Roberts rules, that there is the ability for anyone voting in the affirmative during the course of the meeting to request that that item be considered. And I know there were some of you requesting that tonight's meeting be in the form of a reconsideration of that prior action, using and relying upon Roberts rules. If Roberts rules were to apply, and if indeed, the procedure for readdressing an item that came before council could only be placed on council if someone voting in the affirmative could put it on the agenda, that would mean you'd never be able to address that ever, until it was authorized by someone who voted for it. Roberts rules is clear. It gives you the power, the governing body during the course of a proceeding, to address something that you'd already considered, and you did not do that. The other reason why we couldn't tonight, I had a very good conversation with Mr. Fenton and his attorney on the way out, and I had a good conversation with them, literally within a couple of days after the hearing, about their views, as communicated in his attorney's letter dated July 11th. That letter suggested strongly that they believed that you should turn down the use permit. The letter, however, argued in the alternative, that said if indeed you were to decide to approve the permit, they thought it could benefit from additional restrictions and stipulations. I had that conversation driving out this afternoon, and they still are of that view. The problem with being able to allow, and I was told by the representatives of the neighbors, that two of you wish to vote the use permit down, this, that's a property right, that was authorized on July 16th, and to change that right, you have to jump through the due process requirements of your code. It would be an amendment to the SUP. Having said that, having taught land use to cities and towns across the state, this is a classic example of the benefit of communication. When I talk to the applicant's attorney, and when I talk to Mr. Fenton himself, as well as his attorney, both are of the view that additional conditions might be available. And I phoned, I heard that from the applicant's attorney, and I phoned, and I talked to Mr. Fenton the next day. And so that's why I think I'm here to report tonight, that the applicant has agreed not to open for business, to allow a six-week period starting on the July 16th date, to allow the applicant and representatives of the neighbors to see if they can figure out a way to find compromise. For example, at the hearing on July 16th, we talked about restrictions on the use of firearms by people in the facility. I think that's something that they can work on. I've been told that the communications have been quite constructive, and so my recommendation is, is to hear from you, that right now, I'm reporting, and we should hear from both the neighbors, and we should hear from the applicant, but if they agree that what I'm telling you is what they've told me, is that to allow time to see if additional considerations, additional stipulations could be agreed upon. During the interim, the applicant has agreed not to open. The applicant has agreed, notwithstanding the changes in law that occurred earlier this week, to abide by the stipulations that you imposed in the SUP on July 16th, and whatever additional conditions could be agreed upon. That, though, would require, because the due process clause of the Constitution and your town code requires, that when you amend the property right, the SUP, it would require submitting those agreed-upon stipulations, again, agreed-upon by the applicant and by the neighbors, to go back through planning and zoning, so it would come to you as an amendment to the SUP. And in the interim, the applicant has agreed, at least for the six-week period, to agree to not open, and to agree to have the stipulations applied to his facility, even though, when I spoke to the league, I was acknowledged that the legislation that was drafted and became effective on August 3rd had an imprecise change that could deny jurisdictions, the power to impose restrictions on residential behavioral, behavioral residential health facilities. So I'm here tonight to suggest that I had a good, and maybe Mr. Fenton wants to speak, or his attorney wants to speak first, is we had a good conversation as I drove out here tonight, as I explained to them my view of the power to reconsider, and why I believed that power to reconsider was lost when the vote occurred on July 16th. Having said that, it doesn't mean that if indeed the parties can agree upon additional stipulations, that both can agree upon, it's in the interest of both the community and in furtherance of the applicant's goals, that we could then amend the SUP and do that through the proper course, through planning and zoning, and back to you. Having said that, Mr. Fenton, do you wish to speak, or your attorney? Okay.
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. McGuire, you missed quite a barn burner last month. I'm Thomas Galvin with Rose Law Group on behalf of Jim Fenton and the residents of Cave Creek. Mr. Sims has given you a thorough and comprehensive overview, but I would say that is one version of the events that have occurred since we were here a month ago. I do believe that the four of you who voted for this use permit last month have the right to do a motion for reconsideration tonight, and I don't believe that you don't have the right, or that right was taken away from you when that vote occurred last month. But I want to go back, take a step a little bit backwards, and work towards tonight. As you can see, this item is very controversial, and as I told you last month, the town of Cave Creek has six criteria that need to be satisfied for a use permit to be granted. All six have to be met. You have to be abundantly confident and clear that the applicant, because the burden is on the applicant, has satisfied all six criteria. And there are several criteria that have to be met, and I'm going to briefly go through them, and ask yourself, has the applicant proved to your constituents, and proved to you, and proved to the neighbors that stand behind me, that they have satisfied the criteria, including that the location, size, and design and characteristics of this proposed use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of the surrounding area? Are you absolutely sure that they have cleared that hurdle, because these folks behind me are not in agreement with that? Are you absolutely sure that this site plan will be harmonious with the character of the surrounding area relative to scale, height, landscaping, screening, lot coverage, and density? That's a clear no. This is a commercial use in a residential area. Are you absolutely sure that the proposed use will minimize negative impacts on existing areas in the area and the town? There's no way. It's impossible. These folks are going to be guinea pigs for this new use. Number four, are you absolutely sure that the proposed special use will minimize negative impacts on, I'm sorry, will be in conformance of the town of Cave Creek general plan? It is not. You're going to have more employees than even customers/patients at this boutique-style resort/treatment facility. And are you absolutely sure that the proposed special use will be required to have additional land area in excess of the minimum lot area otherwise required by the underlying zone as necessary to ensure adequate mitigation of impacts on the surrounding land use? Absolutely not. This is going to be in a very intense medical service facility. This is not a group home. The group home definition in the town of Cave Creek ordinance is a very simple definition. This is a very complicated, intense, very interesting, unique use. And so I believe tonight that you have the right and the ability to do a motion for reconsideration, because here's the other problem. The applicant will readily admit that they did not do a good job of meeting with the neighbors and explaining to the neighbors what they're doing. I'm a land use attorney, I work throughout the state, and what we do when we have a project and an application is that we meet with the neighbors first, and we work with the neighbors. Because when I appear before a mayor or a council, they always ask me, "Mr. Galvin, have you met with the neighbors? Have you addressed the neighbors' concerns?" Frankly, I would be fired by my boss if I don't do that. And so I think what would happen here last month is that we put the cart in front of the horse. We approved a project, and now we're trying to work with the neighbors. It doesn't work that way. And you guys now have a very complicated, very emotional, very difficult situation thrown in your laps. But you can wipe the slate clean. You can do a motion for reconsideration, you can deny the permit, and you can say to the applicant, "Start all over again." His application was only submitted two months ago, and look at all the recriminations and all the mistrust that has happened in the last two months. It hasn't been years, it hasn't been a decade, it's only been two months. So we can start all over again, and the neighbors would have to listen to him, and it would be a fair process. Work with the neighbors, work with the project, and then come back and show the council that you have satisfied all six criteria of a use permit. Secondly, if you don't, if you don't deny it, we do believe that the residents have submitted six reasonable stipulations. They have to be reasonable, you cannot make unreasonable requests, the applicant cannot make unreasonable requests. And the most important request is six beds. The town ordinance says you can have six unrelated adults living in a facility, so why not be consistent with the town ordinance? It's very simple. Why are we going to jump all the way to 10? The folks don't want any commercial beds next to their home, but they're willing to go as far as six. That is reasonable compromise. So one, we think you can do a motion for reconsideration to deny the permit, ask the applicant to start all over again, so we don't have to go through this mess, or two, do a motion for reconsideration and enact all six reasonable stipulations that the neighbors have asked for. Thank you.
Well, do we want to hear from the other side in a minute, Mr. Sims?
I think you need to ask the applicant if they'd like to speak.
Would y'all like to respond?
Good evening, Mayor Bunch and members of the town council. My name is Heather Dukes, I'm an attorney with Lazarus, Sylvan, and Bangs located at 420 East Roosevelt Street, and I'm here today with regard to Silverman's Estate LLC. We represent the applicant. On July 16th, the town council decided to approve a special use for a group home located at 3010 East Cloud Road, and we are here this evening after receiving notice of this agenda item this morning, and I believe there are a few points that are necessary to address on the record before you. I first want to address the comment at the beginning of this hearing, that the town council's duty is to protect the public health, welfare, and safety of its community, and that includes the health, welfare, and safety of all residents, including those that are disabled. This special use permit will preserve the rural low-density character of this community, and it was based upon the satisfaction of the six special use criteria and the unanimous recommendation of approval that was issued by the planning commission. This family use will be conducted on a nearly five-acre property with adequate screening, open space, landscaping, and equestrian facilities that are already integrated into the neighborhood. There is no threat to public health, welfare, and safety, and the opposition has provided no evidence to that effect. Mitch Prager of Silverman's Estate agreed to process a special use application for a group home, notwithstanding the Fair Housing Act and the case law which supports his right to open and operate a group home for disabled residents as a matter of right. And to further demonstrate his willingness to work with the town, Mr. Prager agreed to abide by the special use approval and the 12 conditions of approval regardless of the statutory changes that took effect on August 3rd. Whether the legislature intended the results of the Whether the legislature intended the results of the recent statutory amendments or not, we agree that state-licensed behavioral health residential facilities, which is our use, are an exception to the sober living home statute and may now be exempt from regulation by cities and towns. So despite the Fair Housing Act and the relevant federal case law, and the recent amendments to the Arizona statutes regarding sober living homes, our client has made a commitment to work with this town and its staff, and to abide by the special use permit approval, and to continue a dialogue with concerned neighbors, as suggested by Mayor Bunch, even after the special use has been approved. But at the end of the day, this special use application received a staff recommendation of approval, a unanimous approval from the Planning Commission, and an approval before this body on July 16th. We have demonstrated compliance above and beyond with the special use criteria, and I cannot emphasize enough that this council has made the right decision. That decision will prevail in a court of law. I also want to note that Chapter 13 of the Town Zoning Ordinance, specifically Section 13.3A, states that a special use approval by the town council shall be effective immediately. Therefore, this special use approval has been effective since July 16th, and since receiving that administrative approval on July 16th, our client has substantially and reasonably relied upon that approval by entering into significant contractual commitments with licensing and marketing consultants, obtaining bids from general contractors, undertaking extensive preparatory measures, and incurring considerable expenses to prepare to open its group home by September 3rd. Such measures have been recognized by Arizona courts as a sufficient basis for equitable estoppel and a claim against the city or town, and I would advise the council to review the reported decisions of Town of Paradise Valley versus Gulf Leisure and Pingay Tor versus Town of Cave Creek. So while our client has agreed to meet with certain individuals and is supportive of the mayor's efforts to facilitate and explore a potential agreement, which, again, we stand here today ready to do that, to continue discussions, our client is very much proceeding with his plans to open a group home at the subject location in reliance upon the July 16th approval. With regard to a potential motion for reconsideration, we would object to a motion being made for two reasons. First, a motion for reconsideration was not advertised in this meeting agenda. It would be a violation of Arizona's open meeting laws to move and approve a reconsideration with insufficient notice to the applicant and no notice to the general public. If you review your agenda, there is no mention of a motion for reconsideration on that agenda. Second, the town of Cave Creek has no current process for a motion for reconsideration set forth in its town code or its zoning ordinance. Town Council Policy Number 43 was adopted in 2004, which purportedly provided a reconsideration process, but it has since been deleted. Therefore, without a specific adopted procedure in the town code, the town must follow the parliamentary procedure set forth in Robert's Rules of Order, and the 11th Edition of Robert's Rules specify that a motion to reconsider can be made by a board member only at the same meeting the decision to be reconsidered was made. Therefore, a motion to reconsider would have been limited to our July 16th meeting. The time for making such a motion has come and gone. In conclusion, I would urge this council to take no action to reconsider the July 16th decision. There has been no response from the Rose Law Group or its clients regarding the mayor's office offer to facilitate a meeting, and we are proceeding in reasonable reliance upon the town's approval. Thank you.
Mayor, those two points, they each are, those are the issues before you. My recommendation is, and we still have public comment, is even the applicant, I'm sorry, the neighbors and their representatives and their attorneys acknowledged that they had identified a number of conditions, and that they, and I'm hopeful that we can try to solve and address those conditions in the next six weeks. I did hear, and the minutes were reflect, that the applicant has agreed to abide by the conditions, the ones already approved, notwithstanding recent legislation, and I think I heard them say, that to the extent they can agree with the neighbors as to additional conditions, they'll abide by those as well. Those are all steps in the right direction. I do believe that the motion for reconsideration, that time has come and gone. I do believe that your town code has a process for amending the S U P. I do believe that communication between the neighbors and the applicant is probably the next best step. I do believe, based on communications that I've heard from the neighbors and the applicant, that they want to try to identify areas of compromise, and that would be my recommendation.
I guess we're to public comment now.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Mary Cafarella, and I live at 36519 North 24th Street. And, Mr. Mayor, and council people, I'm just here to kind of squelch a fear that I have. It's not only this home. I've seen the home. It's beautiful. We have been looking at pictures of it, and everything is beautiful. It will become a beautiful business if you allow it to happen. My family and I have come out to Cave Creek 20 years ago. We wanted to get away from all the busy traffic and humbug of Phoenix and so on and so forth, and we helped with the rest of the residents that came out to build Cave Creek, to make it what it's supposed to be, residential. My daughter has a horse property, and she has horses there and everything. Once you pass, you go north of Carefree Highway, it's like a breath of fresh air. You're in the country. It's nice. And we put a lot of hard-earned money into investing in this, and we're proud of our little town of Cave Creek. My fear is what you're going to do in the future. If we allow this business to go in there, and I have nothing against this man that wants to help people in need, I think it's wonderful. But the idea is, once you say, "Okay," then you've opened a Pandora box. Then other people are going to come in, "Oh, good, now we can put our business out there on Cloud Road." And we don't know what it is. That's the fear of it. Can you tell us so we'd understand what our future is going to be? It could be a Circle K, a Starbucks, condos, and, I mean, I can go on and on and on. Or maybe we'll keep it to, everything to do with the medical establishments. You know, since this is a medical establishment, it has patients, nurses, doctors, we can have an urgent care, doctors, dentists, and so on and so forth. This is the fear we have. Is Cloud Road going to become another Carefree Highway or Bell Road? You know, because once that happens, the traffic is going to be terrible, and we're going to be like in a big crowded community. Not only that, I don't think if the, Mr. Girk, I don't know, I don't want to mispronounce your name, but you know who I'm talking about, right? How would he feel, too? He wants this house to be a group home where there's serenity and peacefulness, but once you open that Pandora box and all these other businesses come in, well, his patients are not going to be in that type of environment that he's expecting. It's just that I want, I wish you could tell me what our future will be, what you're going to do for the rest of it. If you allow one business, it's going to be other, because you can't tell somebody else, "No, you can't come in here," when you already said okay to somebody else. Thank you.
I knew you weren't going to let it pass.
I wasn't about to, Mr. Mayor. Not after you and I met, and you let me down. I wasn't going to let it pass at all, sir. David Cantelme. I live at 3351 East Glory Road in Cave Creek. I have a particular interest in this home because I'm the person that built it, as Ian can tell you. I sold it many years ago, but it's very unfortunate that it's come to this end. I am a practicing lawyer. I have practiced law in Arizona since 1980. It is 38 years now. I have litigated in federal court over permits. I have litigated in state court, in jury trials, in judge trials. Members of the council, I am here to tell you, you have been fed a truckload of manure. You have been misadvised. It is not true that federal law requires you to approve a home of more than six residents. I defy anyone to give the case from the federal courts that so says, and nobody has. I said that more than two months ago, and nobody has. Motion for reconsideration. I differ with my colleague. The property right only vests when the action is final, and if a motion for reconsideration is permitted, which it is, the property right does not vest until the time to make the motion has passed. You can move to reconsider. You should move to reconsider. And why should you do so? First, this is not a group home. It is well beyond a group home. I walk by it every day when I take my morning walk. The intention is to provide services beyond those in a group home. That is clear. It is not limited to the people of Cave Creek. I've heard that shibboleth mentioned, I don't know how many times. They're not here to serve Cave Creek. They're here to make money. Plain and simple. I've heard this business, this is my passion. Ladies and gentlemen, members of our council, defend us. This is what you're here for, because if you don't defend us, you're next. This doesn't end at 3351 East Glory, 310 East Cloud Road. It goes much farther beyond it. You have set a terrible precedent. You have set the precedent that anybody can come in and open this kind of a home, and nobody can stop it. You have been misadvised, you have been terribly advised, and I represent districts all over the state. Members of the council, you have a last chance to rectify your mistake.
Three minutes.
You can fix it. Do so. Move to reconsider, then deny the permit. Thank you.
Katya Kinsel, 41200 North Echo Canyon, Cave Creek. Citizen voter. I have been fighting commercial in my neighborhood for eight years. These people do not have to go through the similar things that I have gone through. Commercial is not allowed in residential, and you all know that, sitting up there. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for listening to me again. Mr. Cantelme is a hard act to follow. I mean, he's absolutely right. Mr. Mayor, I told you that you were being ill-advised prior to the July 16th meeting. Federal law does not protect this type of use. This is a commercial business with a movie theater and hotel amenities that you have approved to put in a residential neighborhood. That's going to have unintended consequences and an impact on the neighborhood and the surrounding homes and the people who have invested their life savings to be a part of this community. And you have a chance this evening with a motion to reconsider to rectify that. I think what Bill Sims and the applicant's attorney have worked out, well, that's peachy. But what you're asking the community to do is to negotiate with a gun to their head, because that S U P stands, and if you don't reconsider it tonight, they don't have any leverage in that negotiation. And if you bring, if you do bring a motion to reconsider, one of two things will happen. They'll either come together, and there'll be a mea culpa, and people will negotiate a reasonably acceptable resolution, something that everybody can live with, or you'll get sued, and you'll know that you were dealing with bad actors who've already threatened to sue you if you take that action. Now, I'm also, again, I told you this earlier, I don't think that they will sue you. This is a speculative investment, but if they do, so what? You have insurance that helps to pay for defense costs if you do get sued, and you have an obligation to the people in this room and the people who live beyond these walls to defend their property rights. And you're telling me that you're relying on legal advice, that federal law creates a speculative property right in somebody who has a profit motive, who doesn't even own property in this town? I'd take great exception with that. And I think that you have an opportunity to fix this situation tonight, and if it brings a mess, it brings a mess. It's a mess that you help make, and you'll deal with it. But you'll deal with it for the benefit of this community. And I think it's shameful if you were to sit here and say, "Well, we're not allowed to take a motion to reconsider." I disagree with that interpretation of Robert's Rules of Order. Frankly, I think it's a tortured interpretation, and as I said earlier, the role of the town attorney is not to tell you what you can and can't do, but to tell you how to legally do that which you feel you need to do to protect the interests of this community. So I'm asking you, as your former colleague, and as your neighbor, and as your constituent, to please do the right thing for this town here tonight. This really sets a horrible precedent. We've been fighting to keep commercial uses where they belong in this community for a long time, and this is just a mess, and you need to help clean it up. And that means doing things that are difficult, maybe putting yourself in a bit of a bind. But if you do it for the right reasons, hopefully you'll be able to sleep at night. Thank you.
Oh, come on, Dr. Smith. That's all. Well, we're back to council, Mr. Sims.
We stand ready to take your direction. My recommendation is, take the neighbors at their word. They and their lawyer acknowledged that if indeed we were to allow the S U P to stand, that it could benefit from additional conditions. The applicant's attorney has said the same. So my view is, we take the next four to five weeks to see if we can fashion a set of compromises that takes the neighbors at their word, that they would allow it to be authorized with conditions and challenges. The applicant, to see if he can add additional conditions. That's my recommendation.
I find it interesting that we pay you to protect us and keep us out of trouble, and yet we have three attorneys here who are representing, well, one lives there, one representing, and one, another town resident who believe that you're misadvising us. Of course, then we have another attorney here who says that we're doing the right thing. I don't know what my council wants to do. I believe in your council, because you've been doing this for a very long time, and with the cases, the applicant's, not applicant, but the S U P owner's attorney said something along the lines of, talked about a case against Cave Creek, which I've not seen.
That's an old estoppel case that is really black-letter law. I mean, this jurisdiction has had a tendency to make law in the state of Arizona.
Oh, yeah, I know. We had some history where we really got sideways and spent a lot of time in court losing.
Mayor, so the record's clear. My view as your attorney is to advise you. At the last meeting when this was discussed, I remember saying to you, "I will not give you advice in public unless you wish to take it." You voted to authorize me to speak, and that was the only reason I spoke.
Counselwoman Wright?
Yes. To me, this sets a horrible precedent, and I'm ready to make a motion to reconsider this, to give the town more time to get it right.
Thank you.
I agree with Councilwoman Wright. I also stand behind with everything that Mr. Adam Trank said, and I stand with the residents.
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Sims, is it correct that, as a council member, if one voted against the proposal, that a request for consideration can only be addressed by a member that voted for it? Or am I mistaken?
Had this motion been made on June 16th, I'd agree with you. This motion was made tonight, and the fact that you have to ask that question demonstrates the weakness of the analysis. Certainly, this town should be able to address this without hoping that someone who voted for it two weeks ago would vote for it to change four years from now. If you read their analysis to its illogical conclusion, you would never be able to discuss this S U P until members who voted for it on June 16th would vote to reconsider. You can vote to reconsider that whenever, and so, and I think we would agendize it, and I think, honestly, if indeed the... And I think honestly, if indeed, the, the very positive phone call I had with the, with the, with Jim and his attorney driving out here, and the positive conversation I had with the applicant's attorney, if indeed they can reach agreement, then you will be reconsidering by amending the S U P, doing it in the proper way, by having that come through planning and zoning to you, the council. Can we address that?
Mr. Mayor, just one, just want to make.
All of us said I'm in a court of law here, it looks like.
You are a judge.
How'd this happen?
How many times you got a chance to say something? I mean, that's.
Well, we got to answer this question.
Please, let's not do that. Yeah, come on up.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be very brief. The motion can be made tonight by either Mayor Bunch, Mr. Sova, Mr. Smith, or Ms. Clancy. We're asking one of the four of you to make that motion for reconsideration tonight. A motion for reconsideration is made at the next meeting. If you don't, all bets are off. That's it. So we ask one of the four of you to please make that motion tonight. Thank you.
Which, which is contrary to what are legal.
Mayor, I got a question.
It's not contrary.
Why is Mr. Sims asking his attorney if that's okay? He just motioned to her and asked her if it was okay to make that.
That's not what I said. I said, they've had a chance to speak now. If they wish to speak, they can.
My bad.
Yeah, please. Or wait a minute. Got Mr. Trank who's going to come up and argue with you first, so then you can get the, the final one. Well, probably not the final, the way this is going.
I'd be happy to let her have the final one, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for giving me yet another opportunity. Listen, it's pretty simple. If the applicant is willing to say he's going to suspend moving forward with this use until he has had the opportunity to work with the neighbors, it is incumbent upon you, in order for that negotiation to take place in good faith, to call a motion for reconsideration, set that hearing at some later date, which suspends the S U P that you've already issued, and allow the, the neighbors to negotiate without a gun to their head. If you take the advice of your attorney here tonight, you put this neighborhood in an unconscionable position, that there's an S U P in place that you no longer have a right to readdress because this meeting will have passed, there's no motion to reconsider on the table, and they've got to negotiate with a gun to their head against somebody who has a vested property right. So take that action now. Take them at their word. They're telling you that they want to come and have a negotiation with you in good faith, and then in the same paragraph before, in the same three minutes, they threaten to sue you? I feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone. This is Cave Creek. We're going to kowtow to somebody who threatens to sue us? Come on, Mayor. Take a stand. Do what's right for these people. They're telling you in good faith they're going to sit down and negotiate, call them on it. Worst, worst that can happen is you get sued.
Well, can, can I make a statement to that?
Of course.
They already went through a tremendous amount of S U Ps with us in the beginning. The idea of this was to bring forward their points that they had brought up at a meeting that I had requested, that we considered before we voted. There were six stipulations. And somehow, we got caught up in things and it didn't come forward. Our idea here is to keep what we have right now and let them work it out, so it doesn't have to go all the way back to planning and zoning, and it can still move forward.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Clancy, I know.
And get yours in. That you brought six things you really wanted, and now you say to me you don't want them?
Councilwoman Clancy, I, I, I know you and I have had our personal differences in the past.
No, I forgive.
But I respect what you do a great deal, and I appreciate what you're trying to accomplish for these people.
So you're saying the way in which we want to do it is not going to work?
I, I guess I'm going to put it back on you like this. There's no harm in this going back through planning and zoning or back to the council for reconsideration.
Well, it puts him further out.
So what? He doesn't live here, doesn't own property in the town. Defend your neighborhood. It puts him farther out, eight weeks? So what?
Well, that also puts us in a bind to some degree as well. From a federal.
This is the life you've chosen. No, the federal law does not require your approval of this. Thank you. I don't have anything further, but I, and I do appreciate the opportunity to speak again.
Please do the right thing.
Seriously, Mr. Cantelme, step right up. I haven't heard from near enough attorneys tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any more who haven't spoken to us?
This is the problem, and this is the issue. You can move to reconsider today, but only today. And the reason is because this is the meeting immediately after the action was taken. If you don't reconsider it today, it's done forever. Then it does vest as a property right. You can do it now.
It's not going to, it, it's not going to go with the property. It's going to go with the business.
You have been so misadvised about that, Ms. Clancy. It does go with the property.
That's where we.
And anyone who tells you otherwise is full of a bunch of baloney. It says right in your ordinance, it runs with the property.
And they agreed not to do it. It runs with the, um, his, his application. So that, no, it's not going to run with the property.
No, you are wrong, ma'am. You are absolutely wrong. And you don't practice law.
I don't.
You're wrong. And he's wrong.
And that's why they call it practice.
And that's right. That's why they call it practice. And that's why you're wrong and he's wrong. It runs with the land.
Well, I think his.
You've made a terrible mistake. And we have to pay for it.
Stipulation for the approved special use shall not and will not run with the land.
And that is totally ineffective. That is window dressing that has no effect in a court of law. You could not enforce that in a court of law, and you know it.
Thank you. I would just want to clarify that when the applicant agreed to meet with the neighborhood and to discuss a potential agreement, that was not an agreement to reconsider this approval. This approval has been made. We had a final decision. It's effective immediately, July 16th. Whether we reach a private agreement with these neighbors or need to amend the conditions of approval, we haven't decided that yet because we have not had an opportunity to have a discussion, a sit-down discussion with the mayor as proposed. We would absolutely object to this reconsideration being granted at this point. Under the Roberts Rules of Procedure, the 11th Edition, a motion for reconsideration can only be made at the same meeting, which was July 16th. Other jurisdictions have adopted specific motions for reconsideration processes, and those are in their town code or their zoning ordinance. You have not done that. So you have to then go back to the Roberts Rules of Order. I, I would like to at least address the one condition of approval that is the major, I would say, sticking point, and that is the six people. And I have, at both the Planning Commission hearing and also at the Town Council hearing, cited to you the Sharp Visions case and also the joint statement that was issued by HUD, where they talk about you cannot approve or require an applicant to obtain a special use permit approval for, for six individuals that are disabled, but then at the same time allow a family of six people as of right. The only difference between those two groups of people is a disability, and you will absolutely have issues under FHA if we limit this use to six people. That's all I have to say.
Is there any help here, Mr. Sims?
I think we have, they've agreed not to open until September 3. And I've heard from the neighbors that they're willing to consider additional conditions. I've heard from the applicant, they're willing to consider additional conditions. We ought to see if we can close those differences. If not, then, then we have to, we, we'll have to make a decision at that time.
Okay. Well, this is the following, the following meeting, right after the one where we made the decision, and that where that had been in our code no longer is in our policies.
You have nothing in your code regarding reconsideration, and so you would default to Roberts' Rules. There may be other jurisdictions that say that you can reconsider it at the next meeting. That isn't in your code.
It's the way we've always done business.
I'm going to give a quick pop for the citizens.
You know, obviously, I'm not, I'm not, not an attorney, and I'm not a, I'm not a judge. Don't even, don't like being put in this position. Based on the cases that I've, that I have seen, that have been cited in, in social media and different places, I have to believe that on the, on the 16th, that we made the right decision. If, if, if the applicant is willing to possibly give up some more, I, yeah, I, I just don't know. I mean, this, this is, this is one of those things where I don't have a whole row of law books sitting behind me to, to turn around and pull out chapter and verse to see what the right way is. There's a motion. There was a second. But even according to these folks, they're not allowed to make that motion because they both voted no on it.
You can. You made it. Be a man.
I, I, no, I am a man. When I first, when I, when I first got involved in local politics, it was in that period where this town of Cave Creek was getting sued all the time and was being told by the, by the risk pool that they were, they were on the verge of, of ceasing our coverage because we were making decisions that were, the town was making decisions that were contrary to established law, established case law, established federal law, property rights, due process, and all those things. I can't in good conscience make, make that motion for you folks because I do believe that we have done, based on the information we've got from our attorney, we're making the right decision. We've got three more people sitting next to my right here who, who were involved in that decision as well and voted in the affirmative, and I would, would ask them at this time, is there, is there one of you who wishes to make a motion, and is there one of you who wishes to have a second?
You know, it's, it's difficult because based on what planning went through, which was months and months, and then us not taking the opportunity to listen to the folks who live here and consider all six of theirs at the time we were making the decision, has led to this. And I don't understand if, as residents, if he's willing to sit down and look at what it is. We went out of our way to ensure it didn't go with the land, that it met certain stipulations for the town to protect that from going further into a commercial concept. We were led to understand that, under federal law, this has been litigated across the country, and towns have spent a lot of money. And it is a huge issue in the state of Arizona. Prescott has probably felt the, the difficulty of it as a whole community, as a whole city in and of itself.
This is Cave Creek.
I understand that. And we as a council.
We were led to believe that, and it is not true.
May.
According to your own.
What don't you believe? I'm sorry. I missed it.
Exactly what he, he, he said. You know, we are not, we are not blinded by this. We have an opportunity to be the voice of the people that we serve.
And that's why we had us in.
Correct. So make a motion to reconsider on a chance.
Come on, David.
Mayor Bunch, may I have the floor, please?
You may.
I think I just heard the applicant's attorney say they have not, she said, I, they haven't decided if they want to negotiate. Is that not what you just said?
Councilwoman Wright, we actually sent an email to the town attorney confirming that we'd be willing to sit down with the opposition and mayor to go over.
But, but a minute ago, that, when you were standing right there, you said you had not decided yet if you wanted to negotiate. That was what you just said?
No, I had said that we would not agree to a motion for reconsideration. We would, we would sit down and talk about any extra conditions of approval, but we had not agreed to a motion for reconsideration or reconsidering, reconsidering the decision that was made on July 16th.
Can I answer Ms. Wright's question? Ms. Wright, we are the ones who want to do what you guys are trying to do here tonight. We are the ones who are trying to come, have everyone come to the table and have an agreement. The only way we can have everyone come to the table and get an agreement is if you do a motion for reconsideration. They told you tonight they have a property right. They assert that they have it. They can walk out of here tonight with it, and there is nothing binding them to calling us tomorrow and asking us for a meeting. If she really wants to meet with the neighbors, she would be urging you to do the motion for reconsideration, saying, please, tell us to meet with the neighbors. It's the only thing that we have to sure, ensure that the meeting will take place. If there's no motion for reconsideration tonight, then they can walk out of here with that use permit, and all of the rights of the residents have disappeared. If you want us to sit at the table with them and negotiate in good faith over six stipulations in which frankly, we have differences with them on, then you have to do the motion for reconsideration. How are they going to agree to move off of 10 beds if they don't get that, if there's no motion for reconsideration tonight? They have it. They win. They win tonight, and the residents lose. If you want everyone to win, if you want a win-win, actually, the easiest solution for you tonight is to do the motion for reconsideration and tell the applicant, work with the neighbors, come back to us with an agreement. Otherwise, you're just telling them tonight, don't work with the neighbors. That's the option. If you want them to have an agreement with the neighbors, then you do the motion for reconsideration. It's very simple. Thank you.
Mr. Sims, August 3, a new set of laws became effective on August 4, actually, I Can you give us an explanation of, of what rights they would now currently have based on, on those new laws as opposed to where we were when we, when we made this, when we agreed to this S U P? The belief, I believe, of four of us here was that if we didn't agree that night, then we were, we were going to have zero rules on them whenever August 4 rolled around. That was our, our belief and our interpretations at time. Can you address that?
Effective August 3, DHS became the agency responsible for regulating sober living homes and behavioral health residential facilities. Prior to August 3, cities and towns had the ability to impose regulations on both, both classes of facilities. When you approved the S U P on the 16th and when they agreed to it, I would argue that at least those 12 survive because they were effective prior to the effective date of August 3. We have, and I will admit with David, that the applicant's agreement to abide by future stipulations is not enforceable right now. My hope would be that if we can close the differences, that the applicant, because they, they, they have said to you, and they've said tonight, that they would abide by those future stipulations, and they come back to you, and they would be stipulations that would be applied to their S U P. Throughout the state, we have some challenges to try to regulate these facilities. We're going to have to adopt ordinances. And in fact, as you know, we're recommending that this town adopt a comprehensive set of ordinances so that you don't become the new Prescott. That's the next step. But now, we have a near-term problem, and that is addressing this applicant. This applicant has agreed to abide by the 12. This applicant has agreed to abide by additional ones if they can be agreed upon. And my recommendation is to see if we can't reach that agreement.
So, so I guess my understanding of this would be if, if we were to reconsider, and we were to choose to reconsider, at that point, we have removed the, the rights granted in the S U P on the 16th of July, and that the August 4 rules would be in effect where he wouldn't actually have to do anything.
If you had the power to reconsider, then those 12 would no longer be effective, and then he would argue that you have no power to control whatsoever.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's the rock in the hard place, I believe, we're in. Mr. Cantelme.
Mr. Mayor, you have been fed a load of hooey. The state never preempted local governments from regulating these entities. It's not true. I've read that bill four times, and it's not in it. Now, it is true, the Department of Health Services does regulate, but you have co-jurisdiction. You are a land use. They are very different in what they do. Very different. Because it is a medical perspective. It is a health perspective. Yours is land and land use only. And for any lawyer here to tell you otherwise is nonsense. It is just pure nonsense. And I've read the Pingitore case, and I've read the, the Town of Paradise Valley case, and I've litigated that case. And they're just wrong. It can't be any plainer. You have been given the path of least resistance. You have been given the path, how do we sweep this under the rug, kick it down the road? They can meet with us all they want, but they will never give in on the six beds. That will never happen. If you don't reconsider, it will never happen. I mean, we can talk all we want. Oh, let's talk. Let's sit down and talk. Let's meet with them. Let's see what they'll come up with. No. People don't give away their rights. It's not the way it happens. You can roll your eyes if you want.
Well, I'm just trying to think it through.
Well, you did. You rolled your eyes.
I did. Because I'm thinking through what you're saying.
Yeah.
So what you're saying to us is, your sticking point on your six is a singular item, which is you want six. is you want six and he wants 10, and you can't come to a compromise?
We would have compromised if we could have, but it couldn't be done because they would not budge on 10. Remember, your town attorney recommended 16. Let's not forget that. And so did Mr. Ian, yeah, you did. You sat there right there, and you said that the town building code required 16. You know that's true, Ian. It's absolutely true. Now, if he's going to tell you you need 16, which you plainly did not, consider the advice you've been given, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something because it's been the other side for so long, and I just want to clarify one thing. The other side needs to speak. I'm sorry.
Yeah, really, yeah, really.
Very quickly, Sandy Walker, I'm on 26632 North 42nd Way in Cave Creek, Arizona. As far as you trying to keep this going, the fact of the matter is, is that it wasn't even on the minutes today. So if you're going to follow your rules, wasn't on the minutes for you to, to reconsider. So if it's not on the, on there to even reconsider, how can you even vote for it? You have to follow rules of law. So that shouldn't even be an opportunity. So that's all I wanted to clarify for you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Sims, am I correct in assuming, I heard that a motion for reconsideration is not allowed or addressed in our present code? It was years ago, and it was eliminated.
Months ago.
Months, okay. Would we be breaking the law?
You don't have the power. It's not in your code.
So we can't do it in spite of what attorneys are saying or what residents pro or con are saying. We would be in violation of the law.
Right now, you do not have a code that allows you to reconsider at a time other than the meeting at which it was agendized.
Thank you.
Councilman Smith, anything?
Do it. Make a motion, David.
No, I'm not going to make a motion. All I'm going to do is say, town code says that we follow rubber rules of order. Rubber rules of order. Now, I'm not an attorney, but as that sage Bob Dylan once said, "You don't need to be a weatherman to see which way the wind is blowing." I read the, the Roberts rule supporter, item 36 specifically says, "You do it the same night," and then it gives you a little bit of a thing saying, "Or you may can do it the next day if everybody agrees that they can do that." It's a, it's a done deal. I'm sorry.
No, it's not. You're wrong.
Well, you're, you've, you've gotten up, and you've said 100 different things.
No, all the same thing.
You said that stipulations don't count. They're meaningless. You said that.
I didn't say that.
Yes, you did.
I said, I said, the one that it doesn't run with the land doesn't count, and that's a fact. I didn't say anything about any other stipulation. You're misquoting me, Mr. Smith.
You didn't clarify at the time.
I did. You didn't hear it right, sir.
This is clearly a no-win for anyone.
No, the rehab is going to win.
And our residents are going to lose.
We all lose.
I think it's election time.
Well, if I were a person who believed in political expedience, I would just say, go ahead and do a reconsideration.
But you can't.
But I believe in following the law, and I'm not going to, you know, worry about whether I get reelected or not. Just for political expedience.
You approve the general plan, saying, well, if I don't pass it-
Please, please. Point, point of order. If we're going to speak, would we please get up to the dais and identify yourself instead of back and forth from the audience, please?
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. Agenda item number two, council discussion, approval of resolution R. 2018-15, finally determining and adopting estimates of proposed expenditures by the Town of Cave Creek for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, establishing the alternative expenditure limitation amount and declaring that such shall constitute the adopted budget of the Town of Cave Creek for such fiscal year.
David?
Good job. So let me move on. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this motion basically affirms the budget that was adopted, tentatively, the tentative budget that was adopted and amended on July 2nd. And so this is the final approval of the budget with the amendments included as of the July 2nd meeting. So to review, we had a work section on June 11th. We adopted the tentative on June 18th. We had another workshop on July 2nd where we proposed the amendments, and then we adjusted the final budget to a lower figure that included the amendments, and now we're seeking the final approval of the budget for FY19. Any questions?
Council, questions?
I have my mind if I'm on it.
There is. Wow, public hearing. Going to open the hearing at this point? Are there any comments on this one?
Don't we do a public hearing and then we talk?
Well, I-
Are we first?
Yeah, actually. Now, now, well, I asked, I asked if there were questions, and nobody asked him any questions, so.
I was waiting until after the public comment.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, do we have any, there's, nobody wants to talk about the budget?
Oh, I do.
I do.
Well, I mean, I mean, out there.
Oh, right. That's what we're waiting for.
Yeah. All right, we're back to council.
A yield to Councilwoman Clancy.
Well, I, I am bringing up just a sort of a singular item. The Parks and Recreation, the 218,000 we're spending this year to the Cave Creek, well, it's not even the Cave Creek, it's the Spurcross Ranch entity. And I'm just wondering, Carrie, have we gotten an update from, is it, he goes by an initial-
RJ. RJ.
Have we heard from RJ? Do we have an analysis from the years that we've been paying and what we've paid for? And the, on the 218,000, what are we paying for and what will we receive?
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Clancy, all of the-
And is this lower than what it's been in previous years? I know we had that discussion.
Yes, everything that I received, every document, all the details that I received from RJ were presented to council-
Right.
-for this budget and previous year's expenditures with the justification.
Okay.
So every, everything that I have, you have received.
Right. Is the public aware that they can come in and see this information?
It is a public document.
Okay.
And we are working to have a meeting that has yet to be scheduled, but should be scheduled very soon to begin additional discussions with the staff.
The public.
The staff and the public.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Mr. White again. Madam Manager. In, they were approved, but I'm referring to the June 11th, 2018, you don't have to look, comments that were in the record, the minutes of the meeting. And in it, it, it states, and I remember this, maybe not all that clearly, but fragmentally, we talked about the dollars in the Cave Creek Water Company, the Carefree Water Company, and the Sewer Company. How out of the general fund, we were lending money to sustain the operation. And we had a discussion as to leaving it in or writing it off. My understanding, and again, it's my understanding, that we were going to write it off and not have it appear again. And I, and we had a discussion relative to when you write it off, it's gone. You can't come back. If we write off a million dollars, we're saying, we're not, it's a bad debt, it's off the books, so be it. But, Robert, what we have in, in, in the budget, and I'm only referring to the three, the Desert Hills Water Company, the Cave Creek Water Company, and the Wastewater Treatment Plant, we've carried forward those numbers. So I would just like someone to clarify if we're going to continue doing it, because you have a footnote down there properly explaining it, that the, the beginning balance includes the amounts owed to the general fund for past accumulation of inter-fund borrowings due to negative cash flows. So I, I just was looking for some input to clear it up for me to where it's crystal clear if this is the way we're going to continue to do it, in hopes of that one day, be it a year from now, or five years from now, or 10 years from now, we'll have income being generated from these three entities, if they're not sold, that will eventually be used to pay down the outstanding debt. So I'd just like to get some clarification as to these three points.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, let me just say that first, your motion did include, when you were adopting the tentative budget, all the details that you would go back and write off, most of that. There was, there was an exception.
Right.
And Robert could, could go over that and explain the details of how it appears in the budget and what it will look like over a period of time. So he can give you the details of how it works in the books.
Vice Mayor Silva, Mayor, council members, what was discussed and what was implemented was a plan to absolve the operations of their inter-fund balances as the, were estimated to be at the close of fiscal year 2018. This budget was prospective, and it, we could not act to resolve those differences in FY18. So it had to be carried forward into the budget process for FY19. But again, because it only absolves the other balances free as of the close of FY18, which we haven't actually fully calculated, but any, any imbalances that occur in the future for fiscal year 19, for example, would result in an additional demand or borrowing that would have to occur between the general fund and the enterprise operation. And that would be obviously a little bit clearer as to who's borrowing what, because the funds have been separated through the process of the, form, form, formulating the fiscal year 2019 budget into three different funds. So it'll be a little clearer in the financial statements going forward for fiscal year 19, not for fiscal year 18, which we haven't finished preparing yet, but for fiscal year 19 and in the future, which operation resulted or demanded to have a loan of cash at the end of that fiscal year. So it would begin to accumulate again. However, that's a policy choice that can be made, you know, every year, we can bring forward a budget that absolves the prior year balances, if that's the desire of council. So I hope that answers your questions.
For the most part, but I'm a simple shoebox person. Money in, money out. If there's money left, it's a profit. If it's all gone, maybe a loss. But, so, is it, does it come before the council then, on a yearly basis, and then the council would decide that outstanding carry-forward amount, how much we would write off? I realize that from this point forward, any money we put in it from the general fund, we would carry it, but we would make a determination as to how much to write off, if any or all of the past borrowings.
Vice Mayor Silva, council members, Mayor, council members, I apologize, the, the issue is a little more complicated than that, and we could also decide to make a permanent transfer with the projection that the, the fact that the fund will not generate enough revenue or have enough cash flowing in to cover its expenses. So we can also do a capital contribution essentially of whatever that calculation would, would warrant. So that does make it a little bit, kind of a two-pronged approach to how you treat, you know, deficiencies where revenues are being generated are less than expenses of the, of the system. So we have those two options, and that would be formulated by, you know, your expression or desires given to the town manager, you know, before the budget process begins, so that the town manager can direct me to make those calculations and estimations so it reflects the budget that the council desires.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wright.
Thank you.
What Councilwoman Clancy and Vice Mayor Silva brought up leads to my interpretation or feeling of the budget. We did not do our due diligence. We did not spend enough time on it. We could have deleted several places where we had money expenditures that were not necessary at this particular time with the town that has some monetary problems to start with. So to me, this shows clearly that we could have, we were rushed going through this process, and we did not do our due diligence.
Do we have a motion?
I guess I can close at public hearing. I'd be happy to do a motion.
Well, please.
Maybe the last one I ever get to do.
No, no, even if the things don't work out, you still get to go through November.
Okay. First meeting in December.
Motion to adopt resolution R. 2018-15, a resolution of the mayor and council of the Town of Cave Creek, finally determining and adopting estimates of proposed expenditures by the Town of Cave Creek for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019, establishing the alternative expenditure limitation amount and declaring that such shall constitute the adopted budget of the Town of Cave Creek for such fiscal year.
Second.
Councilman Smith, you had the motion.
An awful lot of work went into this. Some pretty heavy-duty decisions went into it as well. I think that what the staff did in putting it together originally, and what the council did in reviewing and approving it was a fine job. I'm certainly going to vote in favor of this.
Councilman McGuire.
Councilman Smith, I believe also, Councilwoman Clancy, and I worked on this budget with staff, and I was very pleased. I'd also like to point out that this doesn't mean expenditures, it means a cap on expenditures.
Councilwoman Wright.
I've already spoken, thank you.
Councilwoman Elrod. Councilwoman Clancy.
Well, I'm in favor. I think we, we didn't beat it to death, but we did have some very long discussions on it, and I think issues were brought up and explained, and then they were processed through the final, well, prior to the final edition, I, I think I've got three other editions sitting on my kitchen table along with water that's starting to take up more room than there is to seat people. But, no, I, I'm in favor as well.
Vice Mayor Silva.
I agree with Councilman Smith's reply, and I plan on approving it.
Yeah, I've always said that we could, we could budget for a 747 if we cared to, but we'd never buy it because the revenue wouldn't be there, and that's the way the budget works. You set an upper limitation, and you move stuff around, and that's the way it works. This is financial, roll, please.
Councilman McGuire.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wright.
No.
Councilwoman Elrod.
No.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clancy.
Yeah, I'd like to preface my vote. I think it's important that the people in the community understand that this budget has flexibility in it, and we have budgeted almost $2.5 million more for major issues as water. And within that purview, it may not all get spent. So I think that we're being very proactive in this particular budget to ensure that we have money set aside and available for emergencies. So I vote yes.
Mayor Bunch.
I get to go first? Yes. Oh, I wasn't first.
You got to go last.
You're always last.
I went last, never mind. I remember now. All right, moving on. Agenda item number-
Based on what you just did, I just mentioned to Carrie, also on August 3, a new open meeting law provision that was adopted, every ballot has, she has, the clerk has to record how everybody votes. Now, if, if you vote by nods, she can determine how you voted, then she won't have to call a roll call. If it's unanimous, you don't need to call a roll call. But if you don't have unanimity, and if the clerk can't figure out how you voted, you're going to have to do a roll call for every voter. That's a new law.
Why are they messing with us?
Just a democracy.
Item number three, presentation of possible council discussion of the quarterly financial report by the town finance director. Mr. Whittigan, are you going to do it, or is, yeah?
Did we miss you?
I must have taken that picture.
No, that's what we just did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Robert's explanation got you so long, Doc.
I should agree.
Did you see?
No, no.
If you've got the old one, that's my-
Okay.
That's the other one, that's right.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Every quarter, I give a financial report for the last few quarters and continue to do so. I prepared this report for basically all 12 months of the year on a cash basis, kind of a results of the year, preliminary results. And so what we're going to do is, there we go. Okay, so we're going to compare basically '17 to '18 for the first 12 months, and then we're going to compare '18 to '18's budget. And the other items that we're going to look at are basically what our debt service schedule is or was, and our current or cash balances of the end of the year, and basically our cash projection or financial projection for the upcoming months. So the next slide shows the preliminary results of revenue and expenditures for all governmental funds. So basically, it shows that we're 112% of budget on our revenues fiscal year '18, the middle column compared to the far-right column, which is the budget for fiscal year '18. On the expenditure side, we're at about 68%. And because this includes all governmental funds, I will remind you that it also includes the grant fund, which if we didn't receive any grants, we didn't expend them. So we didn't receive any grants, so we didn't expend them. So that kind of, you know, that's part of going into that 68%. On the next slide, this is a breakdown of governmental revenues. And it shows basically our taxes were quite a bit more than projected, our sales tax revenues were, did pretty well, as well as not only just regular retail and other, but also construction. We also had quite a bit of charges for other services. Contributions and donations were higher than expected. So it ended up that revenues are 112% more than what was budgeted. On the expenditure side, again, it's benefited from the grant that I spoke of earlier, but also in terms of function, we're within our budget and under budget in all major operations. Okay, and on to the enterprise side, we were close to achieving the revenue projected. I want to remind you that the revenue projected did contain some assumption of a potential change in rates. And so the variation has to do with the fact that we haven't finished the rate study and haven't actually affected the results of that, whichever result that might be, which again, we haven't finished. The sales tax was more than what was projected as displayed prior under taxes. This is a dedicated sales tax to the sewer operations fund. That action was taken many years ago by previous council that knew that, or understood that our sewer operations were vital to the development of the town core and knew that the rates could not be charged commensurate to the cost of basically retrofitting a sewer intake and treatment center without, sorry, insects over here, without substantial costs and needed to be supplemented by a dedicated sales tax. So it also shows that expenditures are under budget in total for water and/or wastewater. And on the next page, we have a more detailed explanation of what those expenses entail. And while a couple of categories are over by percentage, by dollar in total, the total budget as well, within the amount that was allocated for wastewater treatment, and then on water as well. So they both basically came in under budget for the year. And then on the revenue side, in more detail, the revenues again, were a little under, maybe because assumptions that were made about the results of what the rate study might be. But again, we haven't finalized that, and so that's why there was a slight shortfall in the projected revenues. And then debt service, so we made the July 1 payment, and that's what the debt service payments were last year, for last year. And then currently, at the end of the year, we had on June 30, $20,268,997. If we were to subtract out the LGIP of $6,286,349, and again, that's an estimated estimation because one portion of the debt service reserve is actually a repair and replacement reserve, which we're still in the accretion of that, but also we are allowed to subtract from it amounts that we actually spend in repair and maintenance. So that number isn't finalized, but that's approximately what it will be. And so that means we have available for expenditure of almost $14 million at the end of the year. If you take out the $4 million in debt service we just paid, there's still $10 million that we're essentially carrying forward. So this is basically the best, the town's financial positions that I have been here for and have seen in the near past history over the last nine years. This is the best financial position the town's been in at the close of a fiscal year. So, and then the next slide kind of shows our projections, or actually, this is the final for the year, that's why I hesitated when I first saw that. So this is how the year ended up, basically, as far as the cash position. Now, there's a little difference between here and the previous slide that represented cash because of timing differences, like outstanding checks, for example, would be the difference, the major difference, so. And the next slide is just the bottom half of the display, kind of shows the net after all the cash requirements or restrictions are taken into account. So any questions?
Robert, I'm seeing $6.8 million there, so obviously some of that, that number up to the 10 is dedicated to stuff or something.
Yeah, it's dedicated to certain expenditures, and so available to expend still means we can expend it, it's just restricted into term, in terms of how we spend it. So another $103,000 would be trails, $200,000 would be, I'm sorry, $200,000 would be trails, $103,000 would be unexpended development impact fees, $699,000 would be water infrastructure, and then 1.7 is set aside for open space acquisition. So we can still spend it, we just have to spend it on those things.
Yeah, so basically, our broke town has started the new year with $6.8 million.
$6.8 million of unrestricted cash.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Word after number four. Presentation to council on the results of Westech evaluation of the water treatment plant, mixed media filters, followed by a proposal and request for council to approve replacement of the media in three filters and the addition of 18 inches of anthracite to filter number four in one project in fiscal year 2019, rather than spreading the project and cost over two years.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, if I could say just a couple of things before Jim starts. And because of the two-sided copying, it looks like his report actually starts on page 196. This project that he's presenting and requesting funds for, he and his staff put together all of these proposals and got this to council in such a short period of time since the evaluation done by Westech, July 10. He and his staff have worked countless hours on this to bring this to you at this meeting so that we can move on this project. His quarterly report for the utility department was originally scheduled for this meeting. Because of this project and the amount of time that he and his staff spend, that quarterly report has been moved to the next council meeting, August 20. And he still has to work on this project, should council choose to approve it. So getting his report put together will again, take many hours to kind of go back and compile that information in time for the next council meeting. So it's not that they aren't working hard and putting in the time and effort to get these big projects done.
Comment, if I may. It's good to see a senior citizen working so hard and diligently through this. Kudos, Mr. Kayler.
Mayor and council.
Are you kidding? He had a full head of hair, and he was 23 when he started working here six months ago.
Mayor and council, the item before you tonight basically asked for your approval for the expenditure of $279,179.41. Three different specific projects are comprised of, comprise that amount. The media for the filters, let me see if we can show you a picture, there are other filters. Those are basically the same kind of filters we have. We don't have that many in a row or that big of a building, but we have three of Trident Westech filters. Inside of those filters, there's media. Each one of those filters has a layer of media, beginning with a rock layer, similar to a flowing stream. Coarse rock on the bottom, less coarse rock as you go up, then sand and garnet, and then on top of that sand garnet layer, what garnet is just a little bigger size sand, there's a layer of anthracite. So what happens in these filters is the, obviously, the water comes out of the process on the left side, goes over the weir, and falls down through all of that media and gets filtered. So the media for all three filters, plus some anthracite for the fourth filter, resulted in a cost of $68,133. There's a package mobile water treatment plant cost, because when we did the analysis on July 10, when Westech came to town to do the analysis, they did an initial study on all of the filters. They spent the first four hours of that day, actually, the 8th, the 9th, and the 10th. The first day was, I believe, the 8th that they came to town. And in the first half-day, they said, you have some media that needs replacement. Originally, as you recall, when we talked about our first, talked about CIP about three months ago, we were going to replace these, the filter media and upgrade all of these filters over two years. My goal was to get two done this winter, and the following two done in the 2019 year. Following the analysis by Westech, it became obvious that we should expedite the media replacement and all the filters, and get all of these filters back up to 100% per the manufacturer's specifications. In order to do that, in August and September of 2018, we had to figure out a way how we were going to get the production out of the treatment plant we needed and the redundancy we needed with filters coming out of service. Takes about seven to eight days to get the media removed, another three, four days probably to get the media in there and filters back online. So while those are out of commission in the middle of the summer, we needed some redundant water supply, and that's where the package water treatment unit came in. That, we checked three or four, I checked a lot of different places, but there were three or four main people, that main manufacturers that I checked out. And it just so happens that Westech had a unit that was available, and that's the $146,000 cost. That's a cost for two months, 60 days worth of filtration. That gives us 1 million gallons a day of production. These units, the one, this unit you're looking at here is a 1420A unit. It has 1 million gallons worth of capacity. So what happens, what will happen is, we're removing one unit at a time, the package unit will come online and replace the production of that unit, and over a period of about six or seven weeks, we'll do all of these filters and get them back to 100% manufacturer's specifications. Then in order to get this media out, we had to figure out what's the best way to do this, and it was pretty obvious to us, we didn't have the manpower. So we needed a contractor to come in and do the labor-intensive process of removing the media and replacing the media, and that's a $65,000 fee. Here's what the different media looks like, not too interested unless, interesting unless you work at a water plant, but we've got the, unless the gravel's on the top. Obviously, as we get farther down, we've got gravel, sand, garnet. Sand and garnet are very similar, and then the anthracite is the top layer. And in all of the filters at the plant, the anthracite, there's about 18 inches of anthracite. It acts as a very coarse removal device, and then the sand and the garnet are the polishing layers. Let's go back. So we, the money for the project, originally, we're talking $400,000. $200,000 was in the budget, was in the maintenance budget, the other $200,000, we were going to do in a future year. The $200,000, we were going to have $400,000 total. Because we're doing it all in one fell swoop, we realized the savings from the contractor removing the media, et cetera. Some of that savings was used in the rental of the package unit, but we still wound up with a savings over the $400,000. The funding comes from the maintenance budget, 200 comes from the maintenance budget, the other 79,000 is coming from, as you recall, we talked in the CIP process, about $375,000 for the CAP metering station, right off of the canal. Subsequent to those discussions, we had meetings with CAP, and we were able to better predict the cost, and that cost dropped and saved us a considerable amount of money, and so that remaining $79,179 will come out of that CIP budget that is now lesser, a lesser cost. So what we're asking you tonight to approve is that total project cost of $279,179.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Mr. Kayler.
Yes.
Assuming this moves forward, and it's complete, how many years can we reasonably expect out of the units until it has to be performed again?
You normally would not replace the media every 15 to 20 years. The key is, is that you have to do annual core sampling of the media and make sure that the media is remaining in a state that you like it, has to be backwashed properly, has to be cleaned properly, has to be skimmed properly. So if you do the periodic maintenance on a rapid sand filter, which all of these are, you should have 15 years easily.
So under your skilled tutelage, we'll be having those inspections and-
Yes.
-we can look for 15 years.
Absolutely.
And then I thought I read in here that the approximate annual savings because of the backwashing and other things-
Right.
-was about $121,000 yearly. So basically, the town is getting a payback in whatever, two-plus years, and then we're really doing well after that by doing it all now.
Exactly. The normal, the normal percentage for backwashing a filter, and after the analysis was done by Westech, the filters are running about 20 to 24 hours and then needing a backwash. Normal filter backwashes are in the 40 to 75-hour run. So you normally use 2% to 3%, 2% to 4% of your daily production to backwash. We're using far in excess of that because of the condition of the media. So replacing the media saves us the backwash water that we would be using every day.
Last question. Would someone being on the system notice any difference in the taste, smell, odor of their water by having new media in there, or is it- their water by having new media in there, or is it, it's not noticeable?
No, Mayor and Vice Mayor, Silva, you wouldn't notice the difference. What will, we will notice the difference because the filters were run much better, and our backwashing frequency will be down, so we'll be saving on, typically, you take backwash water and recycle it back to the beginning of the plant. We won't have nearly that volume to re-treat it after the media replaced.
Thank you.
And I guess the assumption would be it takes more electricity to push it through a plugged filter as opposed to a?
Exactly. And it takes more electricity to recycle that backwash water at 7% or 8% instead of 2% or 3%.
Right, and that's part of our figures, and part of our water loss, is I understand.
It is, it is.
So, cut down on water.
Non-revenue water.
Yeah, non-revenue water, yeah. Okay.
I have a question. Did I hear you say that the production during the process will be somewhere around 1 million gallons a day?
Out of the mobile package unit that we're renting, we're, yes?
Yes, what is our draw typically in the summertime?
About 2.6 million gallons a day.
Pardon?
2.6 million gallons a day.
Yeah, Tom, that one, they're going to do one at a time, so, yeah, so that offsets. They're going to go along the line.
Yeah, the unit you're looking at is 700 gallons per minute, 694 is a million gallons a day. The package mobile unit will produce, replace the flow of one unit.
So, when you apply the package unit that considerably adds and meets our requirements, the draw?
I'm sorry, say that again? I want to make sure.
When you look at the portable unit added to the units in operation, that considerably exceeds the draw that we would expect on a daily basis.
It would match what we have now as each unit we're out of service.
And how much do we draw in the summertime?
About 2.6 is the average daily, unless it's 118, then we pop up to 3 million. Sometimes we have multiple 115-degree days, so.
All right. Any other questions from council? There is, there is public comment on this. Dr. Smith, would you like to speak to this?
Talk to him and do it.
Yes. I thought the comparison of the gravel with the anthracite was absolutely fascinating. I think that was a terrific presentation, I really do.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the statements. We're back to council for a motion on this one.
I'd like to make the motion, please.
Go right ahead.
Motion to approve the purchase of replacement media and anthracite from Westech for the water treatment plant mixed media filters for the amount not to exceed $68,133. And number two, motion to approve contract to secure a mobile trailer-mounted water production unit from Westech for $146,000. And number three, motion to approve filter media replacement by MGC Construction for an amount not to exceed $65,046.41, all pursuant to the town of Cave Creek Town Code 37.07.
Second.
Councilwoman Wright?
Thank you, this looks awesome.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Silva?
Once again, it's great to see a senior citizen being so active, alert, and responsive to the needs, yes.
Councilman McGuire comments?
Being a senior citizen, I think that's right.
We don't want to go to age discrimination here.
Anybody else? I'm thrilled to see this happening, because now we're got them where they'll be ultimately efficient, as efficient as they can possibly be for a long time to go. This one is financial also, so I guess we'll need a roll call.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes.
Councilman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wright?
Yes.
Councilwoman Elrod?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silva?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Bunch?
Yes, by 7-0, motion carries. And it's adjournment time. We have a motion to adjourn? All right, we're out of here. You notice that Councilwoman Clancy's always the one that makes the motion to adjourn? Thanks. I bet if we looked back...